Meeting to order, please call the roll.
Seeger.
Here.
Arsomont.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
Traxillo.
Here.
Doherty. Milligan.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Martino.
Here.
Narcisse.
Here.
Troncoso. Walker.
Here.
Barrios.
Here.
Bennings.
Here.
We have a quorum?
We have a quorum, let's go ahead and appoint the two alternates. As well.
Bennings and Barrios?
Yes, we have two missing commissioners. Okay, announcements, please silence all cell phones, electronic devices. If your agenda item this evening does not work out the way you want it, either for or against, you have the ability to appeal the decision of the commission tonight to the parish council. If you have an item that you wish to speak on, we have speaker cards over here in agenda items, or in agendas, please take one of those speaker cards and fill it out so that we can call on you when the agenda item comes up. After your item is heard, you can exit the building, there's no need to stay around. If you please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Seeger and a pledge of allegiance.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. We ask that you remember Commissioners Doherty and Troncosco as they undergo treatment. We also ask that you comfort the family and the communities affected by the flood in Texas. Lord, thank you and bless those men and women who serve our fair country, making it the best place to live on earth. Lord, thank you so much for the opportunity to live in St. Tammany Parish. We ask all of this in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the minutes, everybody has a copy of it. Commissioner Arsomont.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve.
Okay.
Commissioner Narcisse.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for last meeting, please vote.
Motion to approve the minutes, pass.
Okay, staff, do we have any cases up for postponement?
Chairman. We have item number 15 on the agenda under concept plan approval, 2025 4297 TP, and we have a request to postpone for one month.
Okay. Is that the, we have a request to postpone for one month?
That's correct.
We need to vote, vote on it? Do we need to vote on it?
Yes, you need to vote, yes.
Commissioner Narcisse.
I'll make a motion to postpone the item for one month.
Okay, Commissioner Seeger.
Second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone, please vote.
Motion carries.
Next item.
We also have item number 17, the last item under new business, this is a request to postpone for one month.
Okay, I need a motion to postpone for one month, Commissioner Narcisse.
I'll make a motion to postpone for one month.
Commissioner Arsomont.
Second, please.
We have a motion and a second to postpone for one month, please vote.
Motion to postpone for one month carries.
Any other cases?
No other cases, if I'm not mistaken, we have requests to move up some items.
Yes, we have, we have two agenda items with people with young children. One of them is item number two, we're going to get that one pretty quick. Item number seven, we have a request to move that one to the front, without objection, I'll move it to the head of the, head of the list here. Okay, can you please read item number seven, Commissioner Narcisse, send to the record.
Item number seven, 2025 4279 MSP, minor subdivision of parcel E into parcels E1 and E2, owner Tommy K. Galloway, Representative Bailey Biuris, Surveyor Land Surveying LLC, Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Cheryl Tanner. General location, the property is located on the east side of House Creek Road, north of Sidney Spell Road, Bush, Louisiana, Ward 2, District 6.
Staff.
The applicant is requesting to subdivide parcel E into parcel E1 and E2. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as seen in table 1, the subject property has been through the minor subdivision process thus requesting, requiring the request to be heard by the planning commission. And if you noticed, the previous survey was a request to subdivide the property into parcel A, B, C, D, and E, and now the request is to subdivide parcel E to create a 9.16 acres and a 5 acre parcel.
Pretty, if y'all have any questions?
Okay, you have any comments above, what, staff?
No.
Nope, okay. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? I have no speaker cards, we'll bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Robert.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve, I actually prefer the configuration of these parcels.
Okay.
Over the way they're currently configured.
Okay, motion to approve by Commissioner Robert, Commissioner Seeger.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion, please vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. We do have a couple of items, I'm actually going to go ahead and move up, I know we have a couple of items that Mr. Jeff Shane has to get to the Slidell Council meeting, so at his request, we're going to move up item number 12. Yeah, Mr. Shane, would you mind if we took the other lady with the other infant before you? Thank you.
What number is that?
Number 2.
Babies first.
Babies first. We're going to take number 2 next. Item number 2, read that into the record, please.
Item number 2, Rev. 2507 003, the revocation of an unopened portion of an unnamed right-of-way located north of Trenchard Road, south of Ark Road, in the Riverbend Estate Subdivision, Ward 1, District 3, applicant Andrew and Anne Kate, Parish Council District Representative, the Honorable Martha J. Kazvon.
Staff.
Okay, and this revocation of the unopened right-of-way is to combine that with the existing lots that she owns, and the staff has no objections.
Okay, do you have any comments to add? No comments, thank you for taking the time to hear. All right. Thank you. I'll bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Seeger.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Seeger, Commissioner Robert.
I would like to second Commissioner Seeger's motion, and that baby is adorable.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any further discussion, please vote.
Y'all forgot that I wanted to speak.
I don't, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, I sure did. I apologize. I totally read, read the number on that wrong, if y'all could have a seat, please come forward, sir. Mr. Clay Thede? Oh.
That's number 1.
This is number, okay, Mr. Steve Pierce?
That's me.
Okay, sir, you wish, should we speak against?
Yes, I do, and I'm really sorry to this couple here, but...
Sure.
See, the thing is, the reason I'm against this is because I can't understand why this has been there for all these years, and it needs to change, okay? And I've got an example of why this is not a good idea, okay? We have a severe drainage issue out, issue out there, Spring Lakes, people monkeying with A4 flood planes and stuff, okay? The other end of Ark Road was either sold or given away, or however y'all did, the same thing you're doing with this property, without foreseeing it being a problem. Now, years ago, I had, was it Red Thompson and Wally Godshaw was on my property, asking me what we could do with the problems that was created on Ark Road. And I told them, drain that on down Ark Road to Boyd, go down Boyd 800 yards, and go under Boyd, back into the flood plain where it hasn't been tampered by man. But y'all did, y'all did something on the other end of Ark Road, now that can't be done, that's a perfect example, why do you toy with something? What happens if Spring Lakes, they have playgrounds, and I'm not trying to use children, because I hate when people use children for excuses, but let's say my neighborhood isn't totally destroyed by different situations that's going on in my neighborhood, and let's say Spring Lakes children, they have a playground over there, swimming pool and all this stuff, the children on my side of the road ain't going to be able to go in there, it's going to be a gated community. So what happens if in five years, y'all decide, well, there's a lot of children moved into this neighborhood, maybe we need to put a playground in there, or something like that, no differently than what you did to the northern end of Ark Road, which would solve a lot of Spring Lakes problems, because it was supposed to drain through an A4 flood plain on the original plan, but it can't do that no more, so that was all pushed out on the road, and then, and then, and then you go and put Spring Lakes in, you've turned neighbors against neighbors. I've had people threaten, I've had people threaten me solely because I'm saying, no, no more on Ark Road, no more on Ark Road, I've been threatened. I'm not saying, well, let's put it on you, or you, or you, or you, I'm just saying, no more on Ark Road, and I've been threatened, because of what y'all did on the other end of Ark Road by selling it, or doing the same thing you're doing to this property. And if that's not a legitimate concern, I don't know what would be. I've literally been threatened. I had a gentleman the other day tell me, what are you going to do? What are you going to do, get out of my face when they break your wife's neck? I know, we don't want to hear it. We don't want to hear this.
Let's, let's...
I have been threatened by people out here, because what has been done, turning neighbors against neighbors, turning neighbor against neighbor. Same thing could happen on this property, same thing could happen, that could be something in the future, important to this parish, and you're going to do what with it? The same thing you did on the other end of Ark Road, okay, same thing. I don't have a problem with progressives, I don't have a problem with progressism, but when you're so progressive, you're constantly looking forward and you never look back, the last time I came in here, I wanted to speak against one, at one of these meetings, y'all wouldn't even let me speak, and it was 100% relevant the last time I come in here. And then what I did, came in hot, and I said some things I probably shouldn't have said, because I knew you weren't going to let me speak, and then on our website, you bleep out my words. Yeah, I'm that guy. But this is a problem, when y'all don't, this parish does not need funds from this little teeny piece of land that's been there for 50 years. It doesn't need it, so at least you let me speak this time.
Absolutely.
This time. But it's 100% relevant, you didn't learn from what you did on Ark Road, you didn't learn from that, that would have drained it, that would have solved all the problems on Ark Road, just going down Ark Road to Boyd, back over, and going onto land that hasn't been affected by man filling up A4 and stuff. That's all I got to say, and I'm really sorry to this couple.
Sir, sir, you just got to address us.
I've met these people, and they're nice people.
I understand, but in this forum, you just address us, okay? All right.
They're nice, they're good people.
Thank you very much.
And I have no issue with them.
Okay, I'll bring it, now we'll bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Robert.
Yes, sir, I'm not familiar with the issues on Ark Road, the majority of the folks on this commission are pretty new, such as myself. However, I do know that the way new construction on roads typically works on rights of way in St. Tammany is that if your access is, to your property, is not built out, and there is a dedicated right-of-way, the property owner needing access to that property is required to pay for that road to be put into parish standards, the costs for that are exorbitant. So I tend to sympathize when a family, such as this family, has a small piece of property that they are willing to buy back from the parish, because the cost to build that road as asphalt, which I'm assuming Ark and Trenchard both are, Mr. Carl can correct me if I'm wrong, ranges from anywhere between $250 to $350 a linear foot, and this property is 1,000 linear feet on the small side, that road, I'm looking at it right now on this survey. That's more than my house costs, so I do tend, I completely understand where you're coming from, however, the roads in this area are built out, and this is not considered a drainage easement at this point, this is an unconstructed road. So owing to that, I would all still make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Robert, Commissioner Seeger.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion to approve, carries.
Okay, moving to item number 12 on the agenda.
Item number 12, 2025 4273 MRP, it's a re-subdivision of farm lot number 11 into lots A, B, C, and D, Helenberg subdivision, owner John J. Vickers and Mindy Hardingen Vickers, Representative Jones Fusell, LOP, Jeffrey Shane, Surveyor Dadding Marquez and Associates LLC, Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Pat Phillips, general location, parcel is located on the south side of Doris Street, east of 4th Avenue, Covington, Louisiana, Ward 3, District 5.
Staff.
The applicant is requesting to re-subdivision of farm lot number 11 into lots A, B, C, and D in Helenberg subdivision, the re-subdivision requires public hearing due to lots C and D do not meet the minimum lot width of 150 feet, required under the L1 large lot residential district, and requiring a waiver from the planning commission, and the request shall be subject to items 1 and 2. If you recall, earlier this year, or last year, earlier this year, zoning change request was submitted to rezone this property to L1, and now the owner is coming in front of us to subdivide the property into four parcels.
Mr. Shane.
Thank you, good evening, Jeff Shane of the Jones Fusell Law Firm at PO Box 1810 in Covington, and I represent the current owners, Mr. and Mrs. Vickers, who are under contract to sell this property to Mr. and Mrs. Domang, who live in St. Bernard Parish. You may remember, as staff alluded to, that you heard a zoning case concerning this property back on February 4, at which time we sought, and you unanimously recommended, a change of zoning from R1 to L1 to facilitate these lots, so that the family, the Domang family, can move not only their parents, but also the children, they hope to develop a camp, a family compound at this location. The sketch that we gave you in February is identical to the minor subdivision plot that we have presented to you this evening, in terms of number of lots, configuration of lots, and we understood that a waiver would be needed, obviously, when we started this project in February. So with that having been said, we believe that now that the zoning is in place that facilitates the size and number of lots, we respectfully request that you grant approval to this minor subdivision, and also provide the waiver that would allow the first two lots to be 105 feet in width. If any of you have any questions or comments, concerns, I'll be glad to address them at the appropriate time.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have any speaker cards, does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Robert.
I do not have any issue with this, Mr. Shane, we, as stated, we did review this back in February, and looking at this property, we, it's one of the rare areas in Helenberg that's not an area of special concern, or not a critical drainage area, so it's also the property width sizes, while it, you know, is subject to the waiver, obviously, it's still in line with what's in the area, I would like to make a motion to approve with waivers.
With the waivers, thank you, motion to approve by Commissioner Robert, Commissioner Arsomont.
Second with waivers.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion to approve, carries.
Okay, next we'll take item number 14 on the agenda.
Item number 14, 2025 4296 MRP, re-subdivision of lots 23 and 24 into lots 23A and 24A, St. Tammany Commercial Park, owner CNS Properties G, LLC, and B2 Rental and Supply LLC, Representative Jones Fusell, LOP, Jeffrey Shane, Surveyor Land Surveying LLC, Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Larry Rowling, general location, parcel is located at the end of Bolfield Drive, Covington, Louisiana, Ward 3, District 2.
Staff.
The applicant is requesting to re-subdivide lots 23 and 24 into lots 23A and 24A in St. Tammany Commercial Park, and the re-subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as stated in a restrictive covenants of the approved plot, no lot shall be further re-subdivided without approval from the planning commission, and the request shall be subject to submit 10 original copies of the survey.
Mr. Shane.
Thank you again, Jeff Shane of the Jones Fusell Law Firm at PO Box 1810 in Covington, representing the owners, CNS Properties G, LLC, which owns lot 23, and B2 Rental and Supply LLC, which owns lot 24. There is a proposed sale of lot 24A as configured, and if you look at the re-subdivision map, you can hopefully see that what heretofore was a common boundary line in the middle of the cul-de-sac has been shifted to the right, if you will, 30 feet, you'll see that dimension along the northern boundary, which actually shrinks the size of lot 24A, it increases the size of lot 23A. The purpose for moving the line is that in the event the developer who owns lot 23A would like to extend Bolfield Drive in the future, he will have, obviously, additional area within lot 23A in order to do so. So we do this to effectuate the sale of lot 24A and the lot south of that, lot 22. With those comments, we respectfully request that you approve this lot line adjustment, which is technically a re-subdivision, as depicted on the plot. If any of you have any questions or comments, I'll be glad to address them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have no speaker cards, does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Any against? Bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Arsomont.
Please pardon me, is with waivers, I would go ahead and make a motion to approve? No waivers, okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, Commissioner Robert.
I would like to second Commissioner Arsomont's motion, and just state, please be mindful of the drainage servitude on the back of the property, since that parcel is dwindling. Other than that, yeah, second that motion.
We have a motion and a second, no further discussion, please vote.
Motion to approve, carries.
Thank you. Okay, item number 1 on the agenda.
Item number 1, REV 2506 002, the revocation of an unopened portion of 5th Street located north of 4th Street, south of 6th Street, between Square 26 and Square 28, in Morgan subdivision, as delineated on map number 18D, Ward 9, District 14, applicant Cindy Garcia, Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Jimmy Strickland, it was postponed from the June 10, 2025 meeting.
Staff.
The applicant is requesting to revoke an unopened portion of 5th Street that abus her property, as well as a 28-foot portion of right-of-way located east of her property, and she plans to assimilate the property to the adjacent property which she owns. The applicant is, the staff has no objections, the applicant, but it would be with the stipulation that we, the parish would reserve a 30-foot drainage servitude on the north side of the parish, on the north side of the right-of-way.
Thank you. Are you Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Okay.
I am Cindy Garcia, I just need to revoke it, to get into my lot.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak in favor? Go ahead and have a seat, ma'am, just, yeah, we're going to be, I have one card which is to speak against, Clay Thede? Did I get it right?
Close, right for Thede.
Clay Thede.
Hello, Commissioners, I'm representing my son Chad Thede, he owns lots 9 and 10 in Square 26, which is going to be affected by the revocation, so the frontage of lot 9 will be totally eliminated by this, and part of lot 10, so it's taking the frontage of two of his properties out, which is not really good, so I definitely want to oppose it, because it would definitely diminish the property of the highly valuable Morgan subdivision properties. Anyway, so that's it, and I also did have a question, and how does a revocation work? Are they purchasing that property, or is it, how does that, how do you petition to take, to get the street, and how do they acquire?
Staff, would you, would you?
Because I'd like to get them, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, so for the, the revocation process, you would submit, submit the application to us, the applicant basically has to obtain letters of no objection, generally, from both sides of the, the property. Now, according to the, the state, state legislation, the adjacent property owners have the first right of refusal, so if she was to revoke it, and it would basically, it was approved, it would go to three public hearings, and then the council actually approved it, we would get an appraiser to go out and, and assess the value to it, he'd come back with the value, and then at that point, well, you would actually get the first right to actually purchase a portion of the, I guess, the 30-foot portion that's adjacent to those, that lot.
So it's not automatically assigned to anyone?
Okay, so, so you mentioned, you said you got to have letters of people not opposed, and so what about Kevin Hopkins, who owns lot 8, that is really being affected by, did you get a?
No, he's opposed.
He's, yeah.
We did get a...
I would, I think so, because he's more affected than us or Mrs. Mitchell across the street.
Yeah, but we did get a letter of no objection from Ms. Mitchell, which owns a piece of property right on the south side.
Right, and is she opposed?
She's, she's in favor.
Huh?
She's in favor, she gave us 11.
It doesn't affect her as much, is she?
So...
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak against? Bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Barrios.
I did have an opportunity to go look at this property, and the 28 feet that, that comes out and hits the two adjoining properties, 9 and 10, it really makes absolutely no sense to, to revoke that to the petitioner.
I just want to clarify, staff, it's not, the revocation is just revoking the right-of-way, right? It's not assigning it to anyone in particular, is that correct?
It would, well, it would, it would revoke the, the right-of-way, and then, so that's what it would be done, and then actually, after it's actually revoked, and we get an appraisal for it, at that point, the owner of the lot, on the lot 8 on the north side, as well as Mr. Chad's son, would have the, the ability to...
To purchase it.
Purchase it, their half.
So anybody who's touching this revocation has the opportunity to purchase what's basically adjoining them?
Correct.
Well, I can't get the, has the opportunity to purchase, but you're kind of holding their hand, in that it's almost forcing them, forcing their hand to buy that property, because it's going to be devalued to someone else, those two lots, so I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Okay, we have a motion to deny, Commissioner Barrios, Commissioner Robert.
I just had a quick question, does Ms. Garcia, so that, I just want to confirm the properties that are in question, I've got... the properties that are in question. I've got assessment numbers 105124 and 106976. 976 looks like it's hers at front. That's the one that actually fronts Fifth Street, and then the property to the south, the larger parcel, 56789101112, that is her other property, correct?
No, the one on the, the north, the north side, that's the adjacent property.
Okay, so, but does Ms. Garcia also own 105124?
That's the other parcel.
Okay.
It's on the south side.
Correct, but, I'm sorry, that says Delia Garcia. That's somebody else. Yeah, I think this, essentially, this land locks the parcel just to the north at the very end of Fifth Street, to the north of Fifth Street. I'm sorry, you said Mr. Hopkins' property, correct? So, I would, I would second.
Actually, I did want to say, the, the property, the, like, the lots 8, 9, 10, that's the ones on the, on the, the north of the Fifth Street, they actually have access from Sixth Street. So, they can access from the top, so it wouldn't land lock them.
I'm sorry, is, is Sixth Street constructed all the way down?
Yes.
Not 9 and 10, no it does not.
Of course, you're, well, I just want, just want to point out, it does, it is 28 feet, so it does block 25 feet of Lot 9, and probably about 2 to 3 feet on, on Lot 10. Now, keep in mind, these are 25-foot lots, and you wouldn't actually have actually two pieces of developable property. They'd have to be, you know, combined into one 50-foot lot.
Correct.
And that 50-foot lot would have, would have access.
Well, seeing as we have two other property owners who are opposed, and one who's opposed who showed up tonight, and two other ones who are opposed, I would like to second Commissioner Barrios's.
Okay.
Motion to deny.
We have a motion to deny and a second. Commissioner Truxello.
Staff, how much frontage will they have left on the two lots to the north? You said they would have access.
There's approximately 27 feet of a parish right-of-way that's there, and according to our regulations, they have basically two options. One is to revoke it and then purchase the property, or do, enter the parish right-of-way application.
They'd be there already.
But if they actually were to do the, the second option, they would actually have to bring it up to a public road standards, which would be extremely expensive, so.
Okay. That's what I wanted to hear, thank you.
Commissioner Barrios?
I think the point I'd like to add to that, and I don't think the issue, at least in my opinion, isn't access to the property. That is a, a problem, but it's not the access. You're devaluing the property in lots 9 and 10 by taking away 75% of the frontage. So, the value of the property is severely diminished.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? So, the motion on the floor is to deny, so a vote in the yea is to, to deny the, the agenda item. Please vote.
Motion to deny, pass.
Item number three on the agenda?
If we have, if we have an issue with this voting, it was not passed. It was an affirmative.
Okay, so, record his vote as the affirmative.
Okay.
Item number three on the agenda?
Item number three, 2025-4256, MSP, minor subdivision of parcels A, B, and C into parcels A1, B1, B2, and C1. Owner Claude J. D. Antonio, Representative McGee Holdings LLC, Glenn Blackwelder, Surveyor James J. Jones, Parish Council Representative Honorable Cheryl Tanner. General Location, the property is located on the south side of LA Highway 21, east of LA Highway 1083, Covington, Louisiana, Ward 5, District 6.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to subdivide the existing parcels A, B, and C into parcels A1, B1, B2, and C1. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as seen in Table 1, the subject property has been through the minor subdivision process, thus requiring approval from the Planning Commission, and the request shall be subject to items 1 and 2. If you take a moment to look at the previous survey, it was subdivided into three parcels, and now the request is to go to four parcels of land.
Thank you for your patience. And you are?
My name is Glenn Blackwelder. I'm from Franklinton.
Okay.
On behalf of Claude D. Antonio.
Do you have anything to add to the staff comments?
No, sir.
Okay. I do not have any cards on this agenda item. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Seager.
Move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Seager, Commissioner Robert?
I have a question for staff. I see that there is a note, note number 2, remove the natural area requirements for parcel C1 as it is under 5 acres. Is it within the purview of this commission to request that that remain on that parcel since it, it's really truly just shy of 5 acres, and it was a much larger, I mean, was over prior? It just seems, it would make more sense to keep it consistent across all of the parcels?
Well, I do understand your point, and it's, it's a good point. Unfortunately, this is not a request for a waiver of the required natural buffers, so unfortunately, it could not be put down as a request or added as a request to, to maintain those buffers.
Can I ask you, as the person?
Go ahead.
Can you maintain those buffers on parcel C1, the one that's just shy of 5 acres?
Oh, yes. I've got the 50-foot buffer on either of the sidelines.
Yes, sir. The, so, because of our new Unified Development Code, properties that are under 5 acres are not required to have that buffer anymore. So, that is a request from staff that that note be removed from that survey. I'm just asking you to be a good person and leave the buffers on all the, on that one.
I'd be happy to just leave it just like it is on this flat.
Perfect. All right, awesome. Well, then I would second Commissioner Seager's motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, and a second, Commissioner Narcisse.
No, that's just.
Okay. No further discussion, please vote.
Motion to approve, Carries.
Okay, moving to, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Moving to item number four on the agenda. Get your number.
Item number 4, 2025-4257, MSP, minor subdivision of parcel 1 into parcels 1A and 1B. Owner and Representative Mary Jean Knight, Surveyor James J. Jones, Parish Council District Representative Honorable Cheryl, Cheryl Tanner. General Location, the property is located on the east and west sides of Lewis Quave Road, north of Evans Road, Bush, Louisiana, Ward 5, District 6.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to subdivide parcel 1 into parcels 1A and 1B. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as you can see here in Table 1, the subject property went through the minor subdivision process in 2008 and 2019, and requesting, thus requiring the request to be heard in front of the Planning Commission, and the request shall be subject to items 1, 2, 3, and 4. If you know this, it is currently a 23.14 acres, and the request is to create a 16.53 and a 6.61 acre parcel.
Okay. Do y'all have any comments? You are?
Mary Jean Knight.
Ms. Knight? Do you have any further comments?
No, just want to say I'm a property.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
All right.
I don't have any speaker cards. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Robert?
I have a question for staff. I'm curious, Lewis Quave Road states on the survey that it is a parish-maintained right-of-way.
It is parish-maintained all the way up to almost the residence.
Does this prop, does this road end, you guys can have a seat, it's okay, you're fine. Questions for staff. I've never seen one like this before where the road is shown on the survey, but the right-of-way is not listed. Can you guys give a little bit more information on how this impacts the property owner, and since ownership of that road, even though it is parish-maintained, is obviously on their property, it's not dedicated to the parish, what, how does this work with this one?
It's, it's a tacit. It's, it's been, you know, maintained by the parish for probably, maybe the owner can confirm.
Since it was police jury.
Since it was police jury, yeah.
More than 25 years. So, this is a, a road that was taken into the maintenance system. We don't know exactly when. However, it happens when, at times, the parish road goes over someone's property, and it's, it's just a tacit dedication. Maybe Mr. Theodore would like to add.
Well, my, my concern with it is if we are truly subdividing this property, Lewis Quave Road is only on parcel 1A. Where does that leave parcel 1B in terms of access? Because it does not appear to have access right now to that road.
Well, it's.
It's, it's not, it's a technical question. I know you guys are not trying to cut anybody off. I don't think that. I'm just asking, this is an interesting one.
As I said, it's, it's a tacit. While it's not officially shown that there's a right-of-way, you know, parcel 1B will have access, you know, because it's, it's not, we're not going to put the property line directly along the road itself in the future. We don't know if, you know, this property is going to be further re-subdivided, or the parish is gonna, this, this is going to become a two, two-lane road. So, we reserved, you know, sufficient space to be able to have right-of-way and ditches if necessary.
Okay, so, as far as parcel 1B though, is there a deeded, like, not maintenance agreement because it's parish-maintained, but how does this work with that establishing legal deeded access to Lewis Quave? Or is that just understood? I'm sorry.
It's understood because, as I said, it's, it's sort of like if you just would have a right-of-way on each side of the road.
Okay. Okay, well, I don't really have any issues with this. I would make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Robert, Commissioner Arsenaud.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, please vote.
Motion to approve, Carries.
Moving to item, thank y'all very much. Thanks for your patience tonight. Moving to item number five on the agenda?
Item number 5, 2025-4266, MSP, minor subdivision of 10 acres into parcels A, B, C, and D. Owner and Representative Michael Bach and Shelley Beckerbach, Surveyor John G. Cummings and Associates, Parish Council District Representative Martha Casabon. General Location, the parcel, the property is located on the west side of LA 1077, north of Wells Road, south of Gale Road, Covington, Louisiana, Ward 1, District 3.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to subdivide 10 acres into four 2.5-acre parcels, being parcel A, B, C, and D. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as shown on the survey, parcels B, C, and D are proposed to be accessed from a private drive and are subjected to minor subdivision private drive minimum standards. The proposed name of the access depicted on the survey shall be granted approval by the Planning Commission. The proposed access name is Serene Drive, and it has been submitted and approved by St. Tammany Parish Communication District, and we're requesting a waiver to construct the access servitude and the required drainage prior to building permits being issued on parcels A, B, C, and D instead of prior to the plot being recorded. And the request shall be subject to the above and below comments, comments 1, 2, 3, and 4, and 5. If you recall, parcel A that you see here on the survey was in front of you a few months ago, requesting a zoning change to L1 Large Lot District to make it a uniform zoning, and now we have the owners that are here this evening requesting to subdivide the property into four parcels.
Thank you, and you are?
Shelley Beckerbach.
Okay, and you have any comments to add?
No.
No? Just divide it up.
Divide it up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? I don't have any speaker cards for this item. Anyone against? Bring it back to the commission, Commissioner Arsenaud.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to.
With waivers.
Motion to approve with waivers.
With waivers.
I need a second. Commissioner Truxello?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Robert, do you wish to speak? Okay, no further discussion, please vote.
Item number 6, 20.
Motion to approve, Carries.
A little too quick, man.
Jump ahead of you there, bro.
Thank you. Item number 6, 2025-4272, MSP, minor subdivision of .95 acres, .98, and
12.29 acres into parcel A and B. Owner and Representative Keith Boudreau and Dixie T. Boudreau, Surveyor Land Surveying LLC, Parish Council District Representative Honorable Larry Rowling. General Location, the property is located at the end of Heard Road, south of Louisiana Highway 40, Bush, Louisiana, Ward 2, District 2.
Staff?
The request here is to combine .95, .98, and 12.29 acres into parcels A and B. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing to do. As seen in Table 1, the subject property has been through the minor subdivision process, thus requiring the request to be heard in front of the Pl, Planning and Zoning Commission, and the request shall be subject to items 1, 2, and 3. If you take a moment to look at the previous survey, actually, the .98 and the .95 acres were actually combined into one lot already, and the request is to add more land to be able to create a 5.22 acres, and we confirm with Public Works in the prop, the, the, the road, Heard Road is actually maintained all the way up to the residence that is identified as approximate location of the residence. So, basically, Public Works actually maintains all the way to the .95 acres, and also, the request is to create a 9-acre parcel. So, reduce the size of the main parcel to add to the smaller parcel to create two parcels total.
Okay, and you are?
Dixie Boudreau.
Step up to the microphone for me. Yep.
Dixie Boudreau.
Okay, do you have any further comments?
Yes, sir.
You guys know how the routine is. Y'all watched it all night, right? Thank y'all very much. I don't have any speaker cards on this one as well. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Commissioner Robert?
I love, love, love less density. I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Arsenaud.
Second, please.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion, please vote. Wait for the vote.
Motion to approve, Carries.
Item number 8, 2025-4284, MSP, minor subdivision of 1 acre, 1 acre and 3.63 acres into parcels A, B, and C. Owner Representative Kimber Lee G. Murdoch and Deborah Barfield, Surveyor Land Surveying LLC, Parish Council District Representative Larry Rowling. The general location, the property is located on the north side of Narrow Road, east of LA 437, Folsom, Louisiana, Ward 2, District 2.
Staff?
The applicant is requesting to create three parcels. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to the requested minor subdivision involves the creation of a lot that does not have public front, frontage on Narrow Road or a street, but accessible by a 20-foot servitude of passage, thus requiring a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and the request shall be subject to items 1 here listed on your staff report. You may recall that the owner present here was in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission a few months ago to request a zoning change to L1 Large Lot District, and coming back here in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission to have the survey approved to create lots A, B, and C.
Are you, you miss Barfield?
Yes.
Okay.
We did get the.
We have one, one moment?
Yeah.
One moment, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Steph. It's okay. It's okay.
Okay. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Do you have any further comments to add based on the staff?
No.
No? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was the only, you were the only speaker card I had on that item. Anybody in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
Mr. Paul, you should be thrilled. Remember last time you were here with Ms. Debbie, correct? Again, less dense. I'm all in favor. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I need a second.
I'll second.
Commissioner Narcisse, second. No further discussion. Please vote.
Motion to approve, Carries.
Moving to item nine on the agenda.
2025, 4286 MSP, minor subdivision of parcels A3, B1 into parcels A3B and A3C. Owner and representative, Joseph Damore and Janet C. Damore. Surveyor Land Surveying LLC. Parish Council District, Honorable Arthur Laughlin. General location, the property is located on the east and west sides of Damore Road, south of Hoffman Road, Manaville, Louisiana, Ward 4, District 11.
Staff.
The applicant is requesting to reconfigure two parcels into two additional parcels. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing to, as you can see in Table 1, the subject property has been through the minor subdivision process, thus requiring the request to be heard in front of the planning commission. And the request shall be subject to items 1, 2, 3, and 4. If you notice, one of the parcel is currently 3.3 acre and will be increased in size to 6.75, reducing the size of the 16-acre parcel to 13-acre parcel.
Okay, and you are?
Joseph.
Joseph, okay. And do you have any comments in addition to staff?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Commissioner Seager.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Seager. Commissioner Arsena.
Second, please.
Have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Please vote.
Motion to approve, Carries.
Thank you.
Item 10, 2025, 4291 MSP, minor subdivision of parcel 7A1AB12 into 7A1AB12A, 7A1AB12B, 7A1AB12C, and 7A1AB12D. Owner and representative, Allstate Financial Company, Josh Weiner. Surveyor Low Engineers. Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Rick Smith. General location, the property is located on the south side of West Ashna Boulevard, Covington, Louisiana, Ward 1, District 1. Would we like to hear 10 and 11 together because they're very similar?
They're two parcels, separate parcels with different requirements. And one has waivers, this one does not.
Let's hear 10 by itself.
The applicant is requesting to subdivide a parcel into four parcels. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing to, due to, as seen in Table 1, the subject property has been through the minor subdivision process, thus requiring to be heard in front of the planning commission. And the request shall be subject to items 1, 2, and 3. As you can see, it was one parcel of land and now requesting to be subdivided into four parcels of land. One will, is also proposed to be accessed from a servitude of access.
Mr. Marone.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
One question. Have you seen the way the flow is going tonight?
I will be brief. I'll do my best to be brief. I'll say that. Thank you, members of the commission, Paul Marone. I represent the Wainers and Allstate Financial. We are looking to create three large parcels and one small parcel is set forth on the resubplat. The one small parcel is completely consumed by an existing drainage servitude in favor of the parish. The reason we are creating that parcel is we intend probably to join it through a subdivision process with the parcel on the west side, which is also owned by my client. But there are some complications and some process issues that we're working through with legal to figure out how to do that because of some unique circumstances over there. But ultimately, either that small parcel will be combined with adjacent parcel to make it larger, or it'll just be dedicated and given to the parish outright because it is solely for their servitude. With regards to the staff comments, we will comply with each of them. In talking with staff, as to comment 3, it is our intent to add the dedication language for the access way as suggested. Ms. Cook has already provided some sample language that we've looked at and we're fine with. So we will comply with each of those and we will provide that dedication language as suggested. I'll be happy to answer any questions or concerns that the commission may have at the appropriate time.
That's our record. Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
I do not have any issue with this. I would like to thank Low Engineers for adding the preliminary flood zone delineation on the survey. It's not something we see often, but it makes me very happy. So I would like to make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve. I need a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Arsena.
Second, yes.
Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion to approve, Carries.
2025, 4292 MSP, minor subdivision of parcel 7A1AD2 into parcels 7A1AD2A, 7A1AD2B, Owner and representative, Allstate Financial Company, Josh Weiner. Surveyor Low Engineers. Parish Council Representative, Honorable Rick Smith. General location, the property is located on the west side of Ashna Boulevard and on the south side of West Ashna Boulevard, Louisiana, Covington, Louisiana, Ward 1, District 1.
Staff.
The applicant is requesting to subdivide one parcel into three parcels. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to, the requested minor subdivision involves the creation of a lot that does not front on a public road or street, but is accessible by a 20-foot servitude of passage, thus requiring a public hearing in front of the planning commission. And as you can see in Table 1, the subject property has been through the minor subdivision process and also requiring to be heard in front of the planning commission. And the request shall be subject to items 1 and 2.
Thank you. Ms. Marone.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Again, on behalf of Allstate Financial and the Wainers. This is the property, or a portion of the property that was before you as the zoning commission where it was rezoned out of AML and into PBC 1. We're looking to create the three parcels. Again, we have one unique parcel, which is the very narrow parcel that runs along the property line. The reason that parcel is being created is it's totally consumed by a Cleco servitude, and there's a Cleco power line in that area now. So it's not a, it's not a buildable parcel or usable parcel. But wanted to point that out so you would know what that is. We do intend and will comply with the staff comments like the prior case. As to comment number 2, we will add the dedication language to the plat as staff has recommended to comply. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at the appropriate time. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Arsena.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Commissioner Arsena, Commissioner Seager.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. See, no further discussion. Please vote.
Motion to approve, Carries.
Item number 13, 2025, 4283 MSP, resubdivision of parcel 4A4 into parcels 4A4B and 4A4C. The plantation owner, Robert J. Rath and Jennifer Omar Rath. Representative Jones Fusell, LLP, Paul Marone. Surveyor Land Surveying LLC. Parish Council District Representative, Honorable Cheryl Tanner. General location, parcel located at the east, at the end of Shenandoah Lane, Covington, Louisiana, Ward 5, District 6.
Staff.
The applicant is requesting to resubdivide parcel 4A4 into two parcels. The resubdivision requires a public hearing due to, as stated in a restrictive covenants of the approved plat, no lot shall be further resubdivided without approval from the planning commission. And parcels 4A4B and 4A4C do not meet the minimum lot width of 300 feet required under the R1 Rural Residential District and do not meet the minimum lot frontage of 190 feet on a cul-de-sac, thus requiring a waiver from the planning commission. And the request shall be subject to item number 1 to add the reference to the survey.
Ms. Marone.
Thank you again, this time on behalf of Mr. Rathie. The two parcels we're looking to create, as the comments note, don't meet the width or the frontage. I take a little exception with the width issue because of the overall general size of these parcels, but technically, they don't, even though it requires 300 feet width and we've got 12 acres and 21 acres, it doesn't exactly meet the requirements. But I think it meets certainly the spirit of them in the size of the parcels that we're creating. As to the frontage, yes, we don't meet the frontage, but these parcels both open up into much larger parcels than are required by the zoning or permitted by the zoning and are similar to other parcels that we have in the plantation that are consistent with this. Really, the frontage here is to allow for a driveway, which this width will allow. The homes will be set back a good bit away from that because of the nature of the property here. So with that, we would respect the request. There's no downside or no impediment to granting the waivers. We'd ask for the waivers and ask for the ability to create two parcels as set forth on the plat before you. Thank you, and I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone opposed? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
I don't have any issue with this. I see that it states that this property is partially in a critical drainage area, but looking at the flood maps, it's all the way on the eastern side. It's way far back. The only concern I have is that the fact that the access to the cul-de-sac is like right around 21, 22 feet. I did have a question, Mr. Marone. The, it looks like there's a dirt path. Is that a golf cart path on the southern and the eastern boundary lines of the property?
It's a, it's a dirt road that takes you back into the property. It's been there for a very long time.
But that dirt road is not, I mean, it's obviously not part of Shenandoah. Shenandoah ends at that cul-de-sac.
That's correct.
But there is, there is access for that property owner on that dirt road as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right. That's perfect. That's what I needed to know. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. I need a second. Commissioner Arsena.
Second, please.
Yeah, did you make a motion with the waiver?
There's no, yeah, you read the waiver. Yes, yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the waiver. Apology.
Motion to approve with the waiver. Commissioner Arsena.
Second with waiver.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Please vote.
Number 16, 2025.
Motion to approve, excuse me. I was waiting. We only had nine.
I thought it was my cue to go.
Motion to approve, Carries.
Item number 16.
Item number 16, 2023, 3269 MSP, minor subdivision of parcels D, 1.49 acres, and 125 acres into parcel D1, D2, D3, and D4. Owner Representative Michael W. and Mary S. Anderson and Dwayne E. Rivera. Surveyor Land Surveying LLC. Parish Council District, Honorable Cheryl Tanner. Located, the property is located on the east side of Allen Road, on the south side of Anderson Alley, and on the east side of Allen Road, Abita Springs, Ward 10, District 6.
Staff.
The applicant is requesting to subdivide three parcels into parcels D1, D2, D3, and D4. The minor subdivision requires a public hearing due to, as seen in Table 1, the subject property has been through the minor subdivision process and requiring the request to be heard in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Parcel D2 is proposed to be accessed from a 35-foot access servitude, requiring approval from the planning commission. And parcel D3 is proposed to be created as a flag lot. The proposed width of the flag lot is 74.44 feet, which exceeds the maximum allowable width of the 60-foot flag lot, thus requiring a waiver from the planning commission. And the request shall be subject to the above and below comments 1 and 2. I'd like to bring your attention to actually the survey that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission in 2023, as you can see, for parcels D1 and D2. And after further review and discussion with the property owner, it was brought up to our attention, now if you look at the new survey, that there is a stream that is crossing the top part of proposed parcel D3 and parcel D1. So basically, to be able to achieve D1 and D2, the owner would have had to basically construct a bridge to give access to D2. Could be not, it's possible, however, it, you know, basically, we, after further discussion, and also, we were approached by Mr. Rivera. Mr. Rivera currently own, if you notice, the, it's actually the rear portion of the 1.49 acres and it's, if you see, it says L6. This portion of property grants him access to the new parcel, the 124 acres parcel D-4. Well, he was pretty much in the same situation. Would have had to construct a bridge to go over this stream. So at this moment, Mr. Anderson and Mr. Rivera have come to an agreement to do some land swap that are necessarily involved or, you know, that the Planning and Zoning Commission is not involved in. However, we came up with this concept or this reconfiguration of lots, which basically increased the size of the 1.49 acre parcel to 1.9 acre. Mr. Anderson is able to maintain ownership of parcel D1. He will be able to sell parcel D2 and have an, you know, an access servitude to parcel D2 without having to go over the stream. And it's the same thing for Mr. Rivera. It will grant him access to parcel D4 as well.
Okay, that was a lot.
That's a lot.
Do you have any comments?
No.
No, okay. Thank you for being patient with us tonight.
It's been a great process.
Okay.
It might be a couple of years, but it's all worked well.
You don't want to build a bridge, man?
I'm not in that business.
Okay, okay.
I'm none of you all.
Absolutely. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience, okay, you wish to speak?
I'm Dwayne Rivera. I own the parcel that surrounds Mike Anderson. He and I have been friends for quite some time. I've owned this property for close to 25 years, the two parcels of 70 acres into 125 acres. I bought his investment property back in that time. I planned to come in and ask for a mini subdivision on both parcels of five parcels per, per 125, which would be 25 acres per parcel. And the 70 acres is split into five parcels, which would be 14 acres per parcel. And I like Ms. Robert's idea by keeping the density low. And I don't have any real use to go into a full-blown subdivision with the expense incurred and impacted have on the parish. So that will be with Ms. Lambert. We will follow up in the next several months to make application to have that type of subdivision done on the 125 and 7 acres. There might be, we might ask for a small variance, but that'll be part of, I guess, the.
We'll cross that bridge when we get there.
We don't have to build any bridges. It's just.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
That y'all have, but we might ask for a waiver, a small waiver.
Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor? Anyone against? Bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Robert.
I live in Abita, travel Allen. I live in Abita. Travel Allen Road. Commissioner Martino also lives in Abita. This is a gorgeous area. I'm thrilled to hear that you're trying to keep the parcels large. I just have a question. Helen, it sounds like being mindful of the future, potential resubdivision, the flag lot, and the access, that was all discussed in the process of laying this out, I'm assuming?
Yes, yes, definitely.
I just want to make sure we're setting them up for success.
Yes, definitely. We, we had extensive discussion with both property owners. We worked with the surveyor. I think that we've come up with the best option for both owners. As, as we said, you know, Mr. Rivera will come back in the future and then present his proposed minor subdivision. At this moment, we're just, you know, trying to-
That's perfect.
Grant both of them access without having to disturb this stream.
Okay. Well, I would like to make a motion to approve with the waivers. I don't care that the flag lot access is over 60 feet. So, yeah.
Okay. Motion to approve with waivers by Commissioner Robert. Commissioner Seager.
It's nice to see cooperative neighbors working together to resolve-
Absolutely.
-difficult issues. I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Please vote.
Motion to approve, Carries.
Guys, I see a couple of y'all in the audience. Was there a, an agenda item that you were waiting for? Okay. About you guys. You're good. Hey, good. Yeah, you know.
Love civic-minded people.
And Mr. Narcisse is very handsome, too, right? So. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. They, they, they were, yeah. All right. Motion to adjourn. Thank you.